Usual thing, fire regulations, there are no tests expected, so should there be an alarm? It is the real thing. There are three exits, one over there with the running figure, one to my right, how do I know? And one through the main entrance in which you came in. Recording of council meetings, any member of the public may film, audio record, take photographs and use social media to report proceedings for any meeting that is open to the public. The protocol on that is available. If I could just stress, this is a meeting open to the public, not a public meeting. Therefore, the only people who will here speak are those doing deputations or asking questions. I hope you will listen to both sides of the argument. Respectfully, I have no wish to be a poor man's John Virco shouting order, order. So I ask you for your cooperation in advance. If I could just outline very briefly what will happen this evening. First of all, when we have formalised this at the beginning of the agenda, the case officer will give a brief presentation. Then the deputations will be heard, the questions will be brought, a full presentation will follow. At that point, I will ask the local ward member, who is not a member of this committee, will not have a vote, to put the point of view of his ward. At that point, it will be open to debate from members of the committee. Again, I make it absolutely clear, this evening's meeting is not about the philosophy or the principle of what we're looking at. It is a planning meeting, it is determining this specific interpretation as against the policies of this council. So with that, I'll hand over the officer and ask for any apologies, please. Thank you very much indeed. Item number one, are there any declarations addressed, please, member, Mr Oxey?
Just the same, as shared in the past, I have voiced my support for sustainable and effective energy production. But I will be waiting to hear the officer's report before I make a decision on this particular planning application.
Thank you very much, Mr Oxey. Anyone else, any declarations? Thank you. Item two, petitions, deputations and questions.
Good evening. In the short time that I have, may I attempt to point out that this report is inconsistent, subjective and incongruous. The predicted generation capacity of the wind farm is recognised by the report to be locally significant. It would after all be the one and only source of renewable energy produced in Rutland of any note. And yet, the perceived detrimental impact against which this is balanced is purely one of aesthetics, that the turbines are visible, not on grounds of noise, safety or anything harmful, just that they can be seen. Even this is inconsistent and unclear. Is it that they're visible from certain heritage and conservation sites, as it states in one part of the report, or from nearby villages, public rights of way and local roads, as it states in another? Whichever it is, it surely cannot outweigh the case for the Wolfock site, providing by far the best location for Rutland to make a significant contribution to renewable energy. Don't forget that when you leave the meeting and put the kettle on for a cup of tea, it won't be energy generated in Rutland that you'll be using, just some other place that has cooling towers or slag heaps on its horizons. It seems totally incongruous for Rutland to ignore this at a time when world leaders are forging future plans to restrict global warming. I would urge the committee to take the responsible decision of rejecting the recommendations and granting planning permission for the project.
The elements of questioning, gentlemen, seem to be limited to querying which groups of locations the impact of the turbines is unacceptable from. To answer this, the impact of the turbines is unacceptable from all of the elements identified, as detailed in the reason for refusal at the beginning of the report. Addressing the remainder of the gentleman's submission, it is not purely a matter of aesthetics that weighs against the proposed turbines, but the impact they have on the defined and protected characteristics of the locations from which they are seen. The recommendation has been made in the midst of the discussions ongoing regarding combating climate change. However, planning law requires the decision to be made in accordance with the development plan unless material considerations indicate otherwise. And government guidance has been used in making the recommendation contained within the report.
Thank you very much, Mr Oxey. You have the opportunity to ask a supplementary question if you wish. All right, thank you. I'm going to take the next few questions and then the presentation before the deputations. So if you have the second question, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My question is, could officers please explain the way in which they have waited the letters from the community with those received via the application? Whilst the number were very similar, this was far from the case for their content. Those writing against the application were largely individual letters, specifically relating to the application and the reasons for their objections. Those that were submitted in favour were on a pre-printed letter and relate to the virtues of wind farms. Very few seem to have any relationship to the application or its detail and were signed by people from all across the UK.
The number of letters received in support or opposition to a proposal or the nature of those letters as either bespoke creations or template letters is not relevant to the determination of the application, although can be used as an indication of the level of public interest in the application. The matters raised by the letters are near extent to which those matters are material to the proposal are what is relevant to the determination of the application. For example, 500 letters raising three material issues carry no greater weight than a single letter raising those same three material issues.
Again, Mr Hossein, you have the opportunity for supplementary if you wish.
Well, do you think that is fair? And indeed, well, yes. The original consultation period was 21 days. And in those 21 days, 590 submissions were put in, of which 96% were against and 4% were in favour. But after the 21 days, which was, what was initially said was the consultation period, you were then flooded on two days with another 550.
The 21 day consultation period is a statutory requirement, it is a minimum. The recommendation, the application must take into account all comments received prior to the decision being issued. In response to your queries to whether it's fair, the issues raised within the letters are those that are material to the decision. So in answer, yes, I think it's entirely fair that the application is determining all the issues that have been raised.
Thank you very much. I think we have a third question.
I'd like to basically say that, does the panel think that...
Sorry, if you'd like to go to the table, there is a microphone.
I appreciate that people are against wind farms for their obvious reasons. However, I do believe that we should be...
Sorry, Mrs, could you please stick to the question as you submitted it? That is the text that you submitted?
I'm sorry, but I've actually forgotten it. Could I have that? In comparison to unconventional hydraulic fracturing, can the panel and the people in opposition confirm what considerations they have given to the effects of fracking against wind farms? Will wind farms contaminate the water underground with carcinogenic chemicals and radioactive materials? And do wind farms contaminate the earth with volatile organic compounds and nots? And what will happen when the world runs out of time to combat climate change?
This is to panel, officers can't speak on behalf of people in opposition. The merits and demerits of fracking are not material consideration in relation to the current proposal, which must be assessed on its own merits. Fracking proposals are subject to their own applications and the impacts of the proposal are considered at that time. As noted in the main officer's report, it is not the law of the council to challenge national energy policy.
Again, you have the right to a supplementary if you would like to ask one.
If we don't allow for a wind farm on this site, will there be a substitute use for that land? And could, in theory, could we be looking at, possibly maybe not a fracking site, but they'll be looking for places to put waste, which will be far more harmful to the environment and the people who live in the area?
The application site is currently in agricultural use. Unfortunately, we aren't able to predict what planning applications may go forward in the future. However, the development plan is in place to indicate what uses are likely to be acceptable in the various areas of Rutland and other parts of the future applications in the same ways it applies to this one.
Thank you very much. That is your supplementary, thank you. I'm now going to ask the officer to give the short presentation, we will then take the deputations.
The application site is located to the east of the A1, to the south of the villages of Streton here, and Cipron here, and to the west of Pickworth here. Nine wind turbines are proposed with a maximum top height of 80 metres, a maximum tip height of 130 metres. This plan details the locations of the nine turbines, these dots here, and also showing our 1 kilometre, 2.5 kilometre, 5 kilometre separation distances from those turbines. Streton, Cipron and Pickworth, here, here and here, are all located within the 2.5 kilometre line, as is called Henry, to the southwest of the site here. This plan illustrates the full infrastructure proposed for the site, including the nine turbines, both meteorological mass locations, and the new tracks and hard sanding and control buildings and construction compound is located down here. This is a typical elevation drawing of a wind turbine. Unfortunately, there is no indication on this in terms of what height the turbine is supposed to represent, but it is illustrated at the title of the development proposed. Also proposed within the site are the two major meteorological masses. These are similar to the existing meteorological mass that's located adjacent to the site. These are indicated as being a maximum of 80 metres tall, not including the 2 metres like the rock at the top, the other mass on the site. This one, which is a meteorological mass associated with the control building. We also have a control building, an essential part of the infrastructure required in conjunction with the proposal, and is a structure to monitor and contain all the equipment needed to run the site. This building is proposed to be 5.5 metres tall to the bridge, approximately 32 metres by 14 metres, and it is ranked by an external fence compound 20 metres by 27 metres. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much indeed. I'll hand over the officer now to introduce the deputations.
Thank you, Chair. We have three deputations, and the first one aims to be made by Mr Harrow.
Chairman, members, officers, I'm speaking this afternoon, this evening, on behalf of the Wolfock Wind Farm Action Group, which was a group set up by the villages of Pickworth, Cipron and Streton to represent their concerns with this application. Unlike the first questioner, I would like to compliment the director for places and the case officer for a very thorough and balanced report. We agree with their arguments and with their recommendations in favour of refusal of the application on the grounds of conflict with numerous core strategies and planning guidelines. Not included in the officer's report, but appearing throughout the RES submission, is a mention of a presumption in favour of approval for renewables applications. Whenever RES's plans conflict with national or local plans and policies, they make no effort to amend their plans, but merely claim that the presumption in favour overrides what they see as troublesome policies. Whilst national planning policy does include a presumption in favour of sustainable development, it also accepts that where the harm caused by a proposed development outweighs the benefits, then planning permission should be refused. That means that the perceived need for renewable energy does not automatically override environmental protections. Let me just repeat that, the perceived need does not automatically override environmental protections. On the 18th June this year, there was a ministerial statement that said that in cases where applications had already been submitted, as in this case, local planning authorities can find the proposal acceptable if, following consultation, they are satisfied it has addressed the planning impacts identified by affected local communities and therefore has their backing. As I would demonstrate, the application totally fails to meet this condition. The local community have identified concerns and conflicts with RCC planning policy over noise, visual impact on the landscape and heritage sites, potential harm to wildlife, separation from public footpaths and bridleways, interference with air traffic radars and eventual decommission. As previously mentioned, RES's approach to almost all areas of concern has been to dismiss them on the grounds that they are irrelevant in the light of a presumption in favour of renewables. No attempt has been made to locate turbines outside areas of low capacity or away from villages and bridleways, nor to reduce the number or height of the turbines. I'm not going to go further into the numbers of letters since that has already been discussed, but there were a substantial number of letters from the local population which have not, in our opinion, been addressed. And therefore, we feel that on no sensible basis can it be asserted that RES has addressed the planning impacts identified by local communities and that the proposal has their backing. We have legal advice that if the committee should claim that the proposal has addressed local concerns and has public support...
Sorry, you are running out of time. I'll let you finish your sentence.
Okay, if I could just do the very last bit then. On behalf of the local villages, I must ask the committee to reject the application to erect nine wind turbines, each 130 metres high. That is, nine turbines, each of which is 100 feet higher than the chimneys of the Kettinson network.
Thank you very much. That is, I'd like to reply again in three minutes if I may ask if they wish to do so. Would you like to come forward to the table? Thank you.
So in response to that deputation, we start with the, there is indeed the presumption in favour of renewable energy, because it is the golden thread of the national planning policy framework that development should be sustainable. But it is thoroughly recognised that that is caveat to the extent that impact on the environment, economic and social wellbeing should be adequately addressed. When we took on the site, we recognised that the site had a low capacity of the airfield. The original plan was for 14 turbines, and as part of our pre-submission engagement work, we modified the initial proposal of 14 turbines down to nine. That is, bringing us further south, northern extent, so the turbines were further away from the villages of Streton, Cipron and Pickworth. So we have been engaging with stakeholders throughout the process, both before submission and after submission. I think our particular meetings ourselves have had with British Hall Society, Ramsdale's Association and the Dean, NACs, to address all the issues of material concern to the planning. Such that we find ourselves in a position where any of those particular items are not taken forward as a cause for actual refusal. With respect to the written ministerial statement of June, I would just like to make sure that members are aware of the distinction between the new projects and the transitional projects. And I believe the planning officer's report does highlight that this project is a transitional project and therefore subject to the criteria afforded to that in the ministerial statement.
Thank you very much. I think we're now having four minutes, members, to ask questions, whether the original deputy or the RES representative. Are there any questions from members? Mr Kandey.
Thank you, Chair.
Sorry, if you'd just wait for the microphone.
Yes, just one question. That is to yourself, and it is, are we already on target in the UK to achieve the 2020 renewable energy targets without this installation?
There have been statements at the House of Commons to the effect that we are, but only recently, a leak of communication from the Department of Energy and Climate Change from the Secretary of State have indicated that we are not on course for meeting those targets. Statements have been made as to the ambitions in light of meeting targets for 2030, but not 2020. And it said that those are very much revolving around imports of renewable energy from those which have a high capacity, such as renewable hydro from Norway. But one of the key things about the project is that we're building domestic energy generation.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from members, please? In that case, we'll move to the second deputation and over to the officer.
Again, I should use your three minutes, thank you.
Thank you. So I'll start straight away. In Paris, right now, the United Nations conference on climate change is happening. The outcome of these talks were expected to be a new international agreement to keep global temperatures rise below 2 degrees C. Without projects like Wolfock, how do you expect the UK to meet its global responsibility? Some of you may have misconceptions about wind farms being noisy, interfering with lots on the landscape. But these planning applications has taken these things into account by placing the turbines above the legal minimum distance to the nearest house, meaning you'll hear more from the A1 and you'll hear more from the turbines themselves. For me, turbines are a beautiful symbol of progress. You don't hear people saying, "I hate that windmill down the road", so why is the turbine really different? This project will also bring economic gains to the local community through the electricity discount offered to the people living near the turbines of nearly £200 per annum. And a community benefit fund where at least £32,400 will be provided for social and educational projects for people living and working near the wind farms each year. We must keep up with the rest of the world and come together to battle climate change. In the second quarter of 2015, 25% of our energy came from renewable energy, which is up 8.6 points compared to the same period last year. This shows progress, but to halt climate change, more must be done now. Norway produces 98% of its electricity by renewables. Italy has a comparable population to the UK and they produce 40.1% of their electricity from renewables, showing it can be done. So I implore you as a global citizen to approve this planning application and put an end to the "not in my backyard" culture of this country. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, there is a right to reply from RES if they wish to exercise their...
So, yes, as you can appreciate, I have the full in support of the comments made by that deputation. And it is the reason why we look for renewable energy. RES is a company which deals in all manner of energy sustainability and wind farms are just one aspect of that. Wind farms are the cheapest form of renewable energy generation and the UK has the best wind resource in Europe for the exploitation of that. The benefits of the project, as was said, do run from both the economic that we featured to the local community during construction, and we provide information based on empirical information from our previous construction efforts as to how much money is contributed during that construction phase to the realm of about £250,000 per turbine through development, construction and first year of operation. Social, we have seen the Community Benefit Fund deliver all manner of advantages and benefits to communities throughout the schemes that we have had it deployed in. And the local energy discount scheme is a scheme that we are very rightly proud of and it has come about through the engagement of communities near to the wind farms that we have been working for in the past years. Thank you.
Then, members, you have four minutes, should you wish to ask either speaker any questions? Are there any questions from members? In that case, we will move on to the third deputation and over to the other two again.
Supporting signatories of this reference deposition live in Rutland and nearby. I was professor of renewable energy at De Montfort University and an advisor to the Parliamentary Select Committee on Energy. the Parliamentary Select Committee on Energy. I lectured on the plan in the Reading University MSc Windpower Module. Part 11 of your Agenda Pack for councillors refers to the UK legislation requiring that, and I quote, "Local planning authorities should recognise the responsibility on all communities to contribute to energy generation from renewables or low carbon sources. Tonight, this is your responsibility. The proposed wind turbines will be efficient, built with modern materials and latest technology. Every rotation of the blade pushes clean electricity into the local network and therefore displaces electricity from fossil fuel stations which would otherwise emit climate change gases. The electricity generated would not be from Russian or lithium gas, not from foreign coal, but from our own British wind, sufficient in a year, as your officers report acknowledging, for nearly every household in Rutland. Knowing this makes the visual impact of wind turbines even more attractive to me and enhances their importance. Within the Midlands, Rutland is to be congratulated on having the best per household waste recycling rate. However, it is shameful that Rutland has the worst per capita carbon dioxide emissions (carbon dioxide emissions) of all UK counties. Hence, Rutland has the largest per capita cause of climate change of all counties. There are two reasons for this. One is the Ketten Cement Factory and the other is minimal renewable energy generation. At last month's General Synod at the Church of England, the Archbishop of York said, "The problem of climate change is a problem of arrogance and greed. We have to come up with something bold enough to allow us to say the unsayable." Within this proposed wind farm, you have the opportunity to say what the opposition says is unsayable. You councillors can say, "We approve the wind farm." Why? Because you are bold enough to come out in favour of a sustainable future and play your part in a responsible energy policy. On the council's own website, MyRutland, you say, "Climate change is not just something that will happen in the future, it is here now." You also say, "We can act on CO2 by reducing our emissions of greenhouse gases." You say, "Renewable energy technologies provide us with a means of reducing our impact on the planet."
I'm about out of time, but again, if you can tell your final sentence as before.
One sentence. Is it not hypocritical to tell others to do what you do not do yourself?
Thank you very much. Again, there is a right to reply of RES.
Further to that deputation, I would like to hope that members take on the point that wind power is an effective source of energy generation, contrary to many claims that it doesn't have a part to play in the UK grid. In fact, wind turbines have a fantastic capability of producing over 20 to 25 times the amount of energy which goes into their creation and operation, including transportation and foundations, whereas other means of power generation rank only around six to nine times throughout the operational life of that plant. As is highlighted by the speaker, that climate change is only one of the particular points about wind energy. It adds climate change, that is certainly a significant one, but we are also looking to increase the domestic energy generation and reduce the air pollution which comes from alternative means of generation. To conclude on this final point, it is a thread of the NPPF that all communities look to take on and play their part in sustainable development. Thank you.
Again, members, four minutes. Mr. Kandey, is that for RES or for the opposition?
I would be happy for either of them to answer the question. My question is, yourselves and earlier comments being made, the suggestion of avoiding this limbiism, the symbolism of limbiism, and that we should just be focusing on our sustainable future. No mention has been made, suggestions have been made that we may or may not be doing enough along these lines. No mention has been made of the enormous solar farm that we allowed to go into at Hanson Cement's quarry, which has little visual impact and generates an awful lot of electricity.
I think with reference to the question put to me earlier in the case of how much is being sort of contributed, that there is the look to provide yet more. With respect to the solar farm at the Ketten Works, we have the Wolfox Solar Application which joins the wind farm. That is still being processed, but nonetheless, the joint operation and proposal of the wind with the solar provides what we believe is actually quite a novel and unique renewables hub, indeed something for the area to be proud of and takes the benefits of both types of generation. Now unfortunately, because of where this country is, the potential for solar generation is greatly limited, that if you want to talk in terms of capacity factor, which is often levied against the wind farms, will have a capacity factor roughly three times, if not more, that of the solar farm. Solar is particularly limited because you can understand that peaks of generation are during the middle of the day. The wind profile is such that you have wind at the beginning and the end of day, and those tend to coincide with the peaks on the national grid. So what we're proposing with the Wolfox, and I haven't to this point mentioned solar because we're here to discuss the wind, but we're proposing as part of this opportunity for a consistent renewables package which plays to the strengths of all energy generation types and maximises the potential for this site.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from members? In that case, thank you very much and thank you for those of you who have a signature to the deposition. I'm now going to ask the officer to go from the fourth report. Mr. Kandey.
Thank you, Chair. I'm not going to rehash the drawings that we've already seen and I'm now going to proceed to a combination of site footage November of this year and the photomontage which has been supplied by the applicant for the application. Throughout these images, you will see reference to their net mass that refers to a meteorological mass that was already on the site. The November images that you will see were taken during the time when RES flew the blimp from the site. And in each case for those photographs, I have added a line on the picture to illustrate both the height of the hub, as described by them, and the height of the tip of the blades. It is important to note that the blimp is going from the centre of the site rather than a particular turbine location, and therefore, members must consider the perspective of nearer and further away turbines in relation to that level. Members' attention is also drawn to the comments in the main policy report regarding the standard stories of photomontages that have been produced. And I would ask members to note that the photomontages are representations of the likely practical turbines. This first image is taken from Streton Churchyard, looking south towards the site. And the public rights of the buildings along the field in front of the view on this picture of the turbine that we're committing wind farm proposal right there in this area photograph. This next picture was taken during the blimp flight, was taken from that public rights of way I just illustrated, and does demonstrate that the tips of the turbine blades will be visible above the tree line. I'll go on to the photomontage provided by RES. I appreciate that some of the image quality has dropped in terms of presenting this on the screen. However, photomontage does support the images taken by myself during the blimp flight and does show an impact in line with that blimp flight. The turbine blades and in some cases parts of the towers, particularly in this location here, will be visible above the tree line. The view from the churchyard is similar to this view, but obviously is viewed from a slightly more bleak angle and therefore the gaps between the larger trees will be smaller. This image is taken from the road leading from Streton to Eclipse and is noted in paragraph 78 R of the main report. And the views south of this location are substantial with very little hedging along the boundary of the road, and where hedging is present, it has a tendency to be quite Whilst this image is taken at a narrower angle of view than the previous picture, it does illustrate the impact the height of the turbines would have in relation to the landscape in this location, which is identified within the supplemental planning document as having low capacity for turbines that are proposed escape. Turning then to the photomontage in this location, again, this illustrates the impact of the proposed turbines on the landscape comparative to the blimp picture. And it should be noted that the turbine nearest to the location is this one here, so roughly in the centre of the site. Moving on, this picture is taken from the centre of the village of Eclipse on the main street just outside the pub. This location is within the conservation area of Eclipse. Again, the applicant has provided a photomontage from a similar point, and again, this makes it clear that the wind farm will be prominent in the view from that conservation area Turning then to Pickwick and the public rights of way network in the area. The public rights of way network is extensive and by the vast majority connect through this point to the west of the village of Pickwick. This is taken and falls part of the road around and heads towards Eclipse. This picture is taken as you travel west from Pickwick, it's just outside the village boundary here. And the location of the blimp in relation to this view means that three of the proposed turbines have been located to the left of the blimp, the remaining six to the right. This image also demonstrates the impact of the spectres I mentioned earlier, as you can see in comparison between the height illustrated by the blimp right here and the similar or the same height of the turbine by the net mass which is reflected just on the old turbine point. The photomontage provided by RES in this area is positioned close to the application site at a junction of two public rights of way and a permanent parallel line. And the public rights of way network in this instance passes between the three turbines on the right of the picture here and the remaining grid site. And the second path, which is also part of the road around, passes on the other side of this point here and passes to the right of this right match turbine illustrated in the picture. This image is taken from Pickwick Main Street, which due to its orientation faces directly towards the site and in this direction. Again, the perspective is demonstrated by the comparative heights of these two lines, albeit noticed that because of the greater distance, the comparative perspective impact is lessened. This photomontage provided by RES for a similar point to Pickwick. Again, as previously, the wider angle of view for the photomontage gives a greater indication of the impact on the setting than the more zoomed in pictures that are taken specifically from the blimp itself. This image was taken from part of the road around in the north-east of the site, looking back towards the south-west. The net mass is located in this area here, that being the height of it. The majority of the turbines proposed part of the site would be located to the left of this point to in this area. This photograph was taken from the entrance to Exton Park, the public rights of way leading from Exton Village itself. The park itself is very flat in this area and you can see there is very little to separate visually from the application site. The public rights of way network across Exton Park is extensive. This picture is taken slightly further along from the previous one and the public rights of way runs in this direction all the way down here. And if you can see the map at the bottom here, it actually splits and there are three rights of way that run along those areas. RES again provided the photomontage from Exton Park. This is actually taken from the other side of Tunnelling Wood, from the pictures previous to show. Those pictures are taken from this area here, you can just make out on the map, the photomontage is taken from this location here. But again, this photomontage particularly illustrates the flatness of the park and the limited stream between the public rights of way and the application site. This building is the Grade Two stylistic Fort Henry. It's located within Exton Park on the banks of the large artificial lake and was designed to take advantage of the unspoiled setting that it was built to sort of form part of that setting. And as you can see, the unspoiled natural view to the, from these forms, an important part of the setting of this Grade Two stylistic building. This next image again is a zoomed in version of the previous image, just to give a clearer indication of the relationship between that designated historic asset and the impact of the turbines on its setting. You can see the meteorological mass here and the blimp, the blimp is here, the tip just there. This is a wireframe image provided by RES of the impact of the turbines on that view. Again, it's representative and illustrates all nine of the proposed turbines. This next image is taken from the B618 between Cotsmore and Rhythm. As you can see from these pipelines here, the turbines will be clearly visible from the road to the southeast and deep through the horizon in that direction. The image provided by RES, this one isn't a photomontage, it is a wireframe, and so the turbines are represented in this location here, you have to transpose that onto the horizon, the panoramic view taken here. I would just also draw attention to this panoramic view, that is, inspiring the Greek church to approach from the west. This picture is taken from a road that runs the Plains. This is the road that leads from the A1 and Doherty to Pickwick. This image is fairly typical of the openness of the aspect from the Plains and again demonstrates the prominence of the turbines from the areas surrounding the site, particularly in relation to existing rural landscape. This image is taken from the access road to Brooklyn County Goldclaw. The driving range, you can just make out on the right hand side of the picture here. And again, a photomontage from a similar location, you can make out the driving range here. And also in this location, you can actually see on this photomontage the control of the This image is taken from Rutland Water, leading outside Longton Church on the banks, and confirms that the turbines would be visible on the horizon from the southern bank. Apologies for the somewhat dark nature of the photograph, it's a bit too taken, just as the sun started to set, so the whole image is a dark environment. We do have the photomontage taken from a point slightly further east along the southern bank, however, and again, you can make out the turbines on the horizon just over the church and water. Turning then to the issues listed within the report. The impact on the landscape of the proposal is identified within the reason for refusal given in the main report. The northern part of the site containing turbines seven, eight and nine is identified as an area of low capacity for turbine development at the time proposed. Similarly, the visual impact of the turbines is considered unacceptable and would have adverse impacts to the mental public features within the vice city as such. The cumulative impact of the proposal is minimal overall, with the only scheme warranting consideration in relation to cumulative impact being located at Deane's End, too far from the site and material impact. Shattered flicker caused by the turbines is able to be controlled Shattered flicker caused by the turbines is able to be controlled in much as hearting to ensure that no properties are within this distance specified within the supplementary planning document. The noise effects of the proposal do not conflict with the assessment regime set out for development of this nature. Concerns raised by the public that the assessment regime is not comprehensive with respect to issues of ambient pollution is noted, but conditions to control this have been imposed by planning inspectors in other cases and such conditions would be best considered if members are minded to approve this application. Formal minimum separation distances set out in policy are all met by the proposal. Several of the turbines do not meet the recommended separation distances, however, there is no statutory basis for upholding these separation requirements. Wind turbines are often stated to affect tourism, however, there is no evidential basis for such assertions, nor do the surveys that have been undertaken in this regard, albeit not relating to Rotten or this application in particular, indicate that there would be a significant adverse impact on tourism. The application documentation, however, bears the fully addressed the impact of the proposal on the setting of Fort Henry and underestimates the impact of the proposal on several other historic assets. This impact is unacceptable and is included in the reason for refusal. There is no statutory requirement for the final details of the grid connection to be included within the application, although the applicant has indicated several alternatives which are being considered. These methods would each have their own consenting regime and consideration of them would not be fettered by the outcome of this application. Initially, objections were received from both National Air Traffic Services and the Ministry of Defence in relation to impact on labour. However, both of these objections have been subsequently withdrawn subject to the imposition of a condition requiring a mitigation solution be installed. The supplementary planning document indicates that group of turbines is the more appropriate payout style within this area rather than a grid pattern of construction. The sighting of the turbines, however, had a greater impact on historic assets than would be acceptable. The applicants identify several areas of mitigation to be provided, should consent be granted, and these would be secured by a condition or need letter which should members wish to approve the application. Turning then to other issues that have been raised during the consideration of the application. It is acknowledged that the proposal would contribute to the national energy supply and to the proportion of that supply provided by renewable and low-carbon sources. It is also noted that there would be an accompanying package of community benefits associated with the proposal and these are both weighed in the balance in favour of the proposal. It is clear that there are other benefits of the proposal that are not quantifiable and therefore can't weigh in the planning values. The proposal is not considered to have an unacceptable impact on climate safety and though a preference has been indicated from both the local community and government for offshore locations, the merits of this particular scheme are wanting quite to be assessed. In terms of health issues, there is no evidence provided to suggest that there will be adverse health effects sufficient to justify a refusal of the scheme, nor is any technical evidence being provided to suggest that the application should be refused. None of the other issues raised within the application considered in the report are considered sufficient to justify a refusal of the scheme. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr. Thor. And as I said, I'm now asking the board member, Mr. Peggy, to come forward and address the committee.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to congratulate the officers for putting forward such a report that clearly indicates the issues at the site. I think it's important to point out that we are not voting on climate change, nor are we voting for or against wind turbines. I think the analogy I thought of, one of the last times this room was used for planning application was for a retail outlet for a supermarket. We've had two of those. There has been a little doubt about the need for a supermarket, but the decisions were based on the planning position with regards to whose sites, not whether or not we wanted a supermarket. I know there has been debate within the committee with regards to policy versus common sense and pragmatism. This is too important an application to be determined by anything of policy. The council spent a great deal of effort and money to get independent companies to bring forward a strategic landscape review. This has been through due process through the council and has been adopted within a local plan that has been subject to review by planning inspectors. This is not someone's view, but a clearly defined policy. If we go against this, then we are open to many forms of challenge. RES were aware of these policies when they purchased a site from Scottish Power. I am told that RES had been fully aware of planners' thought that the application contravened our policy. They have been given the opportunity to revise their plans and resubmit. They have chosen to refuse to do so and rather to challenge us to make the decision. This is the number of this evening. Do we support very clear policies and officer recommendations? Or do we vote against these? The decision is very simple. I would recommend we keep it that way and not complicate it with less material issues. There's been a lot of confusion regarding various national statements on wind farm applications. Transitional arrangements apply to this application. It requires us as an authority to assess the planning impacts raised that affect local communities and for us to judge whether or not those impacts have been addressed by the application. The key judgments that lead to a recommendation of refusal relate to the environmental impact. These include landscape impact, especially in relation to specific turbines on the South Cottesmore Plain; visual impact, especially where it is considered that not only would it have a significant adverse effect on the villages of Clifton and Pickworth, but also on public rights of way including the Rotten Round and within Exton Park, all part of the essential character of Rotten. Historical and cultural environment is something that the application should conserve and enhance. This application is seen as harmful to the settings of Exton Park and Port Henry as well as the views from Streatham Churchill's and the Clifton Conservation. Basically, the list of benefits for the application does little to provide an evidential base for offsetting these important environmental impacts. Thus, I strongly recommend that the committee support the well-argued recommendations in the report and refuse the application. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Peggy. I would like to start. Mr. Officer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I've got a couple of questions regarding policy. In the past, we have at full council debated policy on wind farms. And I remember, I would like clarification of the distance that was stipulated that a wind turbine should be from the nearest house in relation to this application. Because I think, say, I'm a bit of a lost to how it can be justified given the distances from the nearest houses to refuse. I'd also like to make mention of the openness of the landscape which has been referred to. Now, in order for a wind turbine to operate efficiently, it has to be sighted in open landscape. And that is what we have here. Finally, the board member referred to a report which was commissioned. And from memory, I believe that this site, the Wolfock site, came out as the most practical site to place wind turbines from that report. So I'd just like to get clarification of that as well. Thank you.
I'll hand over to the officer of that, Mr. Spencer.
Thank you. And just to clarify, I've got three questions. One is the distance required separating the distance from residential dwellings. And the second is the need for the site to be located in open landscape. And the third is the capacity of the landscape to accommodate such development. In answer to the first one, the supplementary planning document on wind turbine development identifies separation distances from residential dwellings. And it categorises those separation distances into various height groups for turbines of different heights. For the turbines of the height proposed here, the separation distance is eighteen metres or more. So, in this instance, all the residential dwellings do need that separation distance and that's why the separation distance is not the third reason for refusal. In the second part, yes, wind turbines do need to be located where the wind resources are most appropriate. Therefore, obviously, an open landscape under fluted is technically preferable in that regard. As regards the capacity report, again, the capacity of the various landscape character areas within the building was assessed on the basis of differing numbers of turbines proposed and different group sizes of those turbines. And now, for the type of, or for the group size of turbines and the height of the turbines proposed in this location, we've got a split on-site of two landscape character areas. The northern three turbines are located in what's referred to as the D1 South Cottesmore Plateau. The remaining six turbines are located in the Clay Woodlands landscape character area. The D1 South Cottesmore Plateau landscape for a group of turbines of this size has a low capacity indicated. The Clay Woodlands has a moderate capacity indicated. There are no areas within Rotten that are identified with a high capacity for turbines of this size and this group size.
Thank you for that clarification. I have one other question. In the past, when we have looked at planning applications, a view, a loss of a view was not given as a reason to refuse a planning application. Would the officer please clarify that next statement?
That's absolutely correct, yes. The loss of the view is not a requirement of justification for refusing the application. However, the landscape impact of the proposal can be it is set out in the supplementary planning document with the landscape impact of wind turbines in the view is considered to be better consideration.
Thank you. I shall wait to hear what other members have to say before I make my decision, please.
Thank you very much. Other than this, then, do you have anything? Mr. King.
Chairman, in the absence of any other members wishing to speak, simply sit based for the gas moment. I'd like to oppose refusal unless the recommendations from officers are set out in the report. For the members who wish to speak, then obviously they're waiting, not for a second there to let them speak, but at the stage of prepared persons.
Thank you. This is your opportunity to introduce if you wish to speak. And Mr. Conde.
Thank you, Chair. I much appreciate the professionalism from our officers and the work that's being done by the applicants and people speaking for and against. I really just want to make the point that I have no issue whatsoever with alternative sources of energy. And I think that, yes, there is only one issue to consider and as provided by the recommendation. And I'm pretty close to voting there.
Mr. Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Further clarification, could I just ask officers, during the representations earlier, we seem to be accused of lacking our effort into putting into the, sorry, I've lost my thought. Into climate changes, thank you. How many applications for wind farms have we actually had in the past?
In respect of multiple wind turbines, to my knowledge, two. The first was, or two sites, should I say. There were two applications just outside the pub some time ago. I believe both of those were withdrawn. Certainly, there might have been approval on there, but as far as my knowledge, both of those applications were withdrawn by the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's, when you look at what both sides have said, it's a difficult task to make a decision on. But I think officers have got a right. This is the first application just going before us, multiple application. And I do believe that we should go with the officer's report on this one. That doesn't mean that we're against wind farms. If any more come before us, we will treat them all with the same respect. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Marion, please.
Just that, no other members would like to speak. I'm happy to second the counterintervention.
Before I take that, I was just going to, before I actually take your seconding, is there any other member who hasn't spoken who would like to speak? In that case, although I am chairing this meeting, I do have an opinion and I do have a vote. And I've been told this is the most important application of Rotten County Council in the widest form since Rotten Water. And I would concur with that. We develop policies over years. It is not a matter of an eager reaction or leniency. And I think this very fair report, and I would endorse what has already been said about the thurms with which our officers have tackled this very important application. The impact on the historic and cultural landscape, again, it's clearly there in the report, seemed to me to outweigh, and I use that word deliberately because it is the word that is put on the other side of the argument. And those policies, to me, actually outweigh any benefits from this particular proposal. But I would again endorse what fellow members have said. This does not mean that we are categorically against renewable energy. It is simply, and as we come to the vote, we'll see what happens, but certainly I should be voting in line with the officer's recommendation. Mr. Marion, I now accept your seconding. Do I have a second for that proposal? I saw it all over the place. I took Mr. Jackson before Mr. King. And I do need at least five members to vote in favour of that, please. So, may I see votes in favour? That is unanimous, I think. Thank you. And in that case, when we count this, it is bearing in mind you are indicating your approval or not for the proposal. And the proposal, as the officer's report, is for refusal. So if you would simply answer yes or no, as you said. So if you would simply answer yes or no, as your name is called out.
Name's that, Baines?
Yes.
Conde?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Lumme?
Yes.
Ophir?
Yes.
Oxley?
No.
Parsons?
Yes.
Hamill, Dave?
Yes.
So, the result of that is that nine people voting in favour of the officer's report for refusal, one against, so it is duly refused. And thank you very much for your attendance, and that concludes the meeting at, it'll be a time, I think it is 7.13. Thank you very much, and thank you for your attendance. Thank you.